Are we still waiting on Patty?
I think so.
Yeah, she's trying to get it up on her iPad. Give me just a second.
Noah, how are you hanging in there, buddy? I know this is tough for you being a senior.
Yeah, it's a little sad, but if there's one thing that this has proven is even though that I have exponentially more time to do my homework, I can still find reasons not to do my homework.
Hey Noah, do you have to take any AP exams?
Yeah, I'm taking Biology and Calculus.
Oh, so you got that hanging over your head.
Yeah, the first ones in a week and I'm terrified.
You'll do great.
Congratulations on Vanderbilt.
Thank you.
That's, that is, that is more than exciting.
And valedictorian. Congratulations on Van Horn's valedictorian.
Thank you.
I knew, I knew that one was coming.
I was not surprised.
No, no, not surprised to any of us, I don't think.
Okay, um, I, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Hopefully Patty can join us. Yeah, we're, I think guys, we're live already, so, um, Will, Justin, do we, do we want to wait one more minute or should we go ahead and get started?
She's, she's almost there. If y'all, if y'all can wait just a second, I think.
Yeah, let's wait just a couple minutes. Patty Bounds is having technical difficulties and hopefully will be joining us momentarily.
Okay, iPad was unsuccessful. She's trying her phone now, so hopefully we'll have better luck there.
So if you're watching, we are waiting for Ms. Bounce to join us. She's having some technical difficulties and we'll start just as soon as we get her on the screen. So just be patient with us, bear with us, please.
While we're waiting, I could introduce you to Tucker. Come here Tucker.
I had, I introduced him to my dog earlier before you were on here, Tony. She's new. Let's see yours.
Aw, hi Tucker.
Aw, he's, is he a big dog?
He's about 70 pounds of muscle.
Wow.
Yeah. He's, he's half, he's a border doodle, half poodle, half border collie.
Is he new or you've had him for a while?
He's a year old. I got him down in Farragut.
Aw, he's pretty.
Well, I'm in search of a doggy if anybody has any leads, preferably a little small doggy.
I highly recommend Shih Tzu's because they don't shed and very sweet.
I think like a toy poodle. What do you, or like a teacup maybe, you know?
Yeah, and Poodles, they don't shed, do they? I'm big on shedding, if you can tell. I don't want a dog that sheds. I don't like to clean in the first place, much less every moment with a shedding dog. You need a little teacup.
Period in my purse.
Yeah. Mine weighs about two pounds right now, this baby that we have. It's tiny and she's grown too, but she's still tiny, tiny. I'd be glad when she gets a little bit bigger. I'm afraid I'm gonna step on her. Justin, how are we doing?
Yeah, she's, she's still working on it, so you guys can go ahead. I'll, I'll keep working with her.
Okay, okay. All right, let's, let's go ahead and get started and hopefully Ms. Bounce can join us very soon. We definitely want to have her on the conversation. So we will begin with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Bab.
Um, yes, let's all bow our heads for a moment of silence. And now for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bab. Welcome to our, my fellow board members and to all the staff who has joined us and to everybody who's watching on the livestream. As I stated in our April 8th meeting, we know that this format is not the best being electronic, but we're thankful to be able to meet electronically during this time and we have maintained an email address that was set up for public input and the email address is boardcomments@knoxschools.org. And people are welcome to send information and comments to that, what, that email address as we consider the items that will be on our May 13th voting agenda. So next Wednesday at 5:00 PM, we'll have our meeting to vote on the items we discussed today. As you know, Teacher Appreciation Week and on behalf of the entire board, I would like to express our huge appreciation to our amazing staff, our educators, including our teachers, our assistants, our principals, our, our security, school nutrition, technology folks, maintenance, custodial staff and our administrative staff. We are so thankful for you and there's never been a more appropriate time to acknowledge outstanding gifts that you bring to our students and our community each, each day throughout the year and and so I thank Superintendent Thomas and his entire team for their hard work throughout this entire school year on behalf of our children. So thank you all and, and, and if you didn't, if you're watching and you didn't realize it's Teacher Appreciation, be sure and reach out and, and thank the teachers in your lives. In order to follow local health guidelines, we will be meeting electronically for both our May 13th regular session meeting and also our call meeting on Wednesday, May 20th, when we will consider the fiscal year 21, 2021 budget. We will make a decision regarding our June meetings as we get closer to that time. And board members, just a reminder that we have until June 30th this year to complete our annual required training. TSBA has canceled the in-person sessions, but there are offerings online that you can utilize. If you have not registered for one of those, please let Terry know which one you would like to register for and she can assist you in getting signed up. And I think those are the announcements that I had. Are there any requested changes to this work session meeting agenda?
Make it any louder.
Oh, there's Patty. Welcome Patty. I don't know if she can hear us. Patty, can you hear us?
Uh, not really. I mean, it's not very loud. I can't really hear what you're saying. Sorry. I know you're talking.
That's all right, just turn the volume.
It's like at a one instead of a 10.
Okay, just, okay, just turn the volume up on your phone as loud as you can. Hopefully that would help. Okay, all right.
Well, that's turned up. I'm looking to see if there's another place to turn it up here. But I don't see it.
We can hear you perfectly well, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, you'll have a few minutes before we get into our agenda items to, to hopefully be able to hear us better. So are there any changes to this agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Bab. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, well, we'll start with the superintendent's report. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I have some brief updates that have taken place since we've last, last met. First, I'd like to once again express my deep gratitude to our teachers, nutrition workers, security officers, principals, central office staff and others for their hard work and difficult circumstances during the extended closure. Like, I'm pleased to report today, as of, as of today, our school nutrition workers have prepared over 673,000 meals. So that just, uh, it's just incredible amount of work by our school nutrition workers and also our principals, our teachers and volunteers who've distributed those meals. I know that as this health crisis has stretched on, many of us are weary of the uncertainty and anxiety that has, that have become part of our daily lives. But I've been inspired by the example of our KCS community and I'm so proud of the can-do spirit of our employees who've come together to serve students and families during this time. Specifically, many of you, and Ms. Warren just announced, are aware that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. With that in mind, I want to say thank you to our teachers, not only for their dedication and hard work during this crisis, but for their commitment to our community every day of the year. I'd like to remind everyone that we're continuing to provide pre-breakfast and lunch meals through Wednesday, May 20th for any child aged 18 and under. Meals are available from 10:00 AM to noon at 39 locations and you can find all the details on our website. Finally, I know that many of our families have questions about graduation ceremonies and other activities to honor the class of 2020. Everyone has been very patient and understanding as we worked on developing a plan that honors our seniors while adhering to CDC and Knox County Health Department guidelines. I'm pleased that we were able to share some details with families earlier today. Graduation ceremonies will be held between July 27 and August 8 on the football field at each high school. And schools without a football field will host graduation at the World Sphere Park Pavilion. Unfortunately, these ceremonies will be closed to families and the public, but they will be livestreamed and recorded for an on-demand viewing later. We will also be providing each family with a recording of their ceremony. We know that this is not an ideal situation, but please know that we're working hard to make sure that this will be a safe and memorable occasion for our seniors. Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes our report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And we have joining with us Dr. Buchanan, Dr. Martha Buchanan from the Knox County Health Department. Dr. Buchanan, if you are out on, we would love to hear from you and, are you there? There she is.
Thank you for joining us. Sure, thanks for the opportunity and thanks for all that you're doing and I know that I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn that light right off of my head off.
Okay.
It's blinding me and it looks blinding on your screen too. Um, oh, that's better, much more pleasant. Um, so I'm, I'm actually at my house, not at the office, which is kind of nice. One thing I like about these Zoom calls, I can take them from my kitchen. Um, so anyway, um, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I really appreciate the work that Superintendent Thomas and staff have done to keep the staff and students safe through COVID-19. It's an unprecedented time for all of us and something we in public health planned for, for years and years, but never anticipated would it really be like if we actually had a pandemic. And now it's really here and we're all learning and changing based on information and data and, um, you know, learning from what we learned from other places and learning from what we learned from the CDC and the World Health Organization on how to best protect our citizens. And I'm really happy that, that they've come up with a good graduation plan. I know that's not ideal, obviously, to have to do such an alteration to graduation. But we hope that the students will remember it, at least the one thing, it'll be a different graduation for everybody. So that, that'll be worth some memories anyway. I am, I'm on tonight just to answer your questions. Um, you know, right now, we, health, our primary focus is contact tracing and case reporting. So as new cases come up, we're contacting everyone who is potentially at risk for being ill because of that case. And asking them questions, giving them guidelines, putting them in isolation, telling them how long they need to be in isolation. So the whole idea behind contact tracing is we find all those people that are at risk and we pull them out of the population and make them stay home to see if they're gonna get sick. And people are being really cooperative, as you can understand, because they don't want to make anybody sick. And, um, hold on one second, I've gotta let my dog out. She jingled, she jingled the bell on the door and that means let me out. Um, and so in addition to that, we are also helping and supporting and guiding our community as we try to reopen. And I know lots of people are frustrated with reopening, but we have to do this slowly. Um, I was listening to somebody else talk as I was driving home and somebody else talking about being out and seeing that people, some people, a lot of people weren't wearing masks and some people are. But we've all got to do our part. We've got to wear a mask, we've got to take this slowly or we'll have to take steps backwards. And that's just the honest, the honest truth is that we don't do this properly the first time, we're gonna end up going backwards, which is just gonna be even more frustrating for everybody. So I get that businesses are frustrated and the community is frustrated, but we've got to take this slowly in little baby steps so that we don't have to take big steps backwards. It's kind of the idea. So, um, I, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about local situation. Um, I have my notepad in case I have to write down questions and get back to you later because I don't always have all the data in my head.
Um, I know Ms. Christie has a question.
Yeah, and I, I guess this is for Dr. Buchanan or Superintendent Thomas. I'm not sure exactly which parts of the graduation plan were dictated by who, but, and this email just went out and I've already gotten like 10 messages about it. So I, a couple of my questions are, and, you know, the concern being here in South Knoxville, we're really close to Blount County. And some of the questions I'm getting are, you know, well, Maryville High School's doing a graduation on May 29th and limiting to parents, you know, and, and our parents aren't really understanding why parents can't be there. And especially with, I guess my question is, with this being the end of July, first of August, I mean, we're getting really close to school starting back then. I mean, is, is this like set in stone? Can we, will this be maybe changing? It's hard to believe that we can't let parents see graduation and then we're gonna be starting school not that long after that. So I'm just kind of curious about that, if there's, like the way we do churches and maybe mark off places or rows for family.
I want Mr. Myers or, I don't know if, um, I don't remember the gentleman's name, Danny, they, anyone wrote the plan?
Yeah, Bob, want me to come on?
Sure, sure, Danny, if you'll join us.
Yeah, let me find my.
You know, ask. Can you help him?
Hang on just a minute, I'm. Okay, Christie, uh, when we did that initial plan, when we met Dr. Buchanan yesterday, that's what we had in there, but it's what she advised us and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Buchanan, was that we would go back and look at this in July and it depends on what the, uh, you know, the numbers are. And she said that we would, you know, consider safety and data first. And if it's where we can bring the parents, you know, we have no problem with that. But, you know, right now to get something out and get it planned, this is the plan we came up with. So I think to answer your questions, there is a possibility that, you know, we could have parents there if we're out of the different phases. And Dr. Buchanan, do you want to weigh in on that or did I say it correctly?
Sure, no, absolutely. You're correct. I think so much depends on what happens between now and then. We don't have, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball that's gonna tell me what's gonna happen. And so much is in the hands of our community right now, to be honest with you. We've written guidelines that I think are safe and appropriate. We are depending on our community to follow those in order to not have to take steps back. Um, and I realize the guidance in the state is different than, than the guidance in the county. Um, but I, as the health officer, I have the authority to, to recommend different guidance. Um, and we're making those recommendations. We made recommendations to sheltered homes sooner than, than others did. Um, and that's part of why our case count has stayed low. I really believe this social distancing, washing your hands, limiting people, people's interactions are a way to, are evidence-based ways to decrease illness. I get that parents are frustrated and upset and confused and and I hate that we, we're having to make these tough choices. But we have to make these tough choices in order to even hope to open school in August. If we don't do the right thing, we may find ourselves in a situation where we can't even have school in August. So we have to do the right thing between now and then, and that means making hard choices and making some sacrifices and doing things differently. It's just not, business as usual is not an option. Um, we need to be really conservative. Susan, you're, you're muted.
Somebody has a lot of feedback, if anybody can check that. Okay, Christie, did that answer your question before I move to other board members?
Yeah, I'm, I think so. I, I think there's probably maybe we need to get out some clear communication about the differences because, you know, you do see neighboring counties do more, like just about every surrounding county has already announced something for their evaluation. And it just, I don't know if people get why it's different in Knox County than it is in other neighboring counties. And maybe that's something we need to kind of do a better job at communicating. But yeah, for the most part, it answered, I think, my questions.
Okay, I know Mr. McMillan, Ms. Bounce and Ms. Bab all have questions. Let's go to Mr. McMillan first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
With all due respect, you do an amazing job in, and have done for quite some time. But I do believe that we've got better than 10 weeks. Weather is getting warmer. Hopefully, and I know all of us, hope that things improve. And, uh, if they do, would you consider, uh, making some type of adjustment from your standpoint to allow the family to participate in some way, minor way?
Certainly. So, you know, those decisions will be made ultimately by school administration based on local guidance from public health. And so, you know, we, we will look at the data and we are looking at the data every day. That's, we looked at the data to decide to open things up a little bit, but we just have to kind of crack the door open a little bit and take it step by step. And we, we, in our plan, we do allow for mid-phase adjustments or phase adjustments. So there, there are possibilities for us to, to make changes based on how it's going, based on how many people are sick and how overwhelmed the system is or not. And all of the things that we're looking at. So certainly there's a, there's consideration for, for reconsidering if the data indicates that we should do that. Absolutely.
Well, obviously we couldn't wait until like the week before or something, but you know, people would need a, a little bit more as far as expectations, I think, because you might have some people coming in from out of town, whatnot. But I guess based on what you were saying, ultimately, would it come down to, if you disagreed and if the superintendent and the board was of another mind or opinion to allow, uh, at least families to participate, one or two members? Was that what you were referencing?
And certainly the boards and the superintendent's decision on how they move forward. We have always enjoyed a really cooperative relationship and I hope that continues. But, um, you know, I, I do can, depending on the conditions, and I know, I know Superintendent Thomas is not gonna make a rash decision. He's a very thoughtful man. Um, and really wants to protect the students and the families as well. So I trust that he and his staff will make thoughtful decisions based on the data that's available. And I trust that you all make thoughtful decisions. You've made thoughtful decisions all along and you'll continue to do that. Nobody's gonna make a crazy or rash decision. If we see case, cases going up, nobody's gonna say, oh, we, you know, we should open it up and let, let everybody come. So, and you're not asking that either. So, um, I think that, um, you know, the relationship we have with the school administration and the board of education is a good one and working partnership. So I, ultimately, yes, you all can make that decision. Um, if you decide to do something different, you can do that. Sure, yep.
I think you're correct in your assessment. I know that the superintendent, nor his staff, nor the board would do anything to, uh, jeopardize students or parents. But with that said, this is such an important thing that to some people, to some people, to the student in particular, that I only learned about an hour and a half ago about the plans. With that said, I think I will, since we meet next week, I think we will, uh, I'm sure other people will have possibly some suggestions, but I will have some to offer that might be a minor adjust, adjustment, but would include at least some of the family. And it can be, you know, tossed around by board members or staff superintendent or just tell me I'm crazy, whatever. But with that said, I just, I feel like this is one of the most important days in the student's life and I, I haven't gotten any calls yet, but I feel like, uh, what Ms. Christie was saying, I'm sure that there, there are plenty of, of my people that will be calling. And to be quite honest, they're not, unless things turn, uh, for the worse, they're not going to, in my opinion, accept, uh, some bureaucrats, and I don't mean this directed toward any one person or group of people. If they're not willing to accept that, uh, without, uh, complaining and complaining loudly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Patty? Turn your volume on, Patty.
It just needs to unmute.
Patty? Here we go. Okay, start over. We couldn't hear you, Patty.
Okay, sorry, I figured, you don't understand.
Do you, Patty, do you ha- still have it on, on your iPad too?
No, I have it, I have it all on my phone to hear, on my computer to see.
Okay. That's the problem.
You need to mute one of those options.
Yeah, mute one of them.
Not that one.
We can't hear you now.
Just a, now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now. For Dr. Buchanan.
Patty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Patty, Virginia has a question. Let's, let me go to her and then we'll come back to you.
Well, I'm wondering if maybe Patty could text her question to someone and let someone else ask it for her since the audio, so.
Ask her to do that. Yeah, I've asked her to text me.
Okay. Okay, um, do you want to wait for her question or you want me to go?
Just go ahead, Virginia, and that would be great, Patty, if you can text, uh, text your question. You can even text it on here on the chat thing.
Chat box, yeah.
Um, sure, and with Dr. Buchanan, I mean, obviously, I think, you know, we want to listen to the medical experts, which is what your office is. I mean, I have no medical background and, and I know what we would like for our kids, but we, we do need to look to you for advice. Um, one thing I, I guess I have a question about is the date that, um, was come up with, kind of the big end of July, um, August, where, where did that date come from?
I'll let school administration answer that question.
Okay.
Danny? Danny, you're muted.
Yes, it's what we did. I think phase three, if everything goes right, would be July 22nd or 23rd. And, uh, so that's kind of why we chose that late date and we know that that would be extremely warm. Uh, I will tell you that we've researched the weather. I could tell you how much rain or what the temperature is going to be. And we chose early and late graduations. We've got, you know, bottled water for the kids. We've got box fans, the whole nine yards if we have to go that late. I mean, I think if we had a preference, we would like, love to go in June, but we didn't think that was feasible with, uh, some of the things out there. So, um, Dr. Buchanan, you want to follow up on that, or is that appropriate?
And I, Dr. Buchanan, if I may, just tag on to kind of combining those other two questions. If we do it toward the end, with those dates, at the end of July going into August, do you feel like that there would be a higher possib- I know you don't know, but do you think that there would be a higher possibility that maybe parents, you know, we could, we could have parents there? I think that's, that would be the ultimate, um, if we had to wait, that would be, um, you know, what we would want.
It certainly increases the chance that you could allow a limited number of people to be there. So waiting later does increase that chance. No guarantees, but does increase that chance.
Um, I guess I'd just like to follow up on all this. I think maybe this is one way Knox County schools can help with the messaging from the Health Department is these parents that we know are going to want to be at graduation, reminding them, they're going to be part of the solution to helping that happen. I mean, the more that everybody can do what the Health Department's telling us to do, the more likelihood it is we can get back to school, we can get them to see their graduation. So maybe we can sort of help with that messaging to sort of realize this is all we can offer right now because we don't, we don't know. I mean, and I realize the Health Department, you don't know what's going to happen two weeks from now. But, um, you know, with what we do know, the best we can offer is the plan that's going out there. But if maybe people will do what they're supposed to do and we can keep it contained, maybe it will allow for some things. But I think also people have to realize if this becomes rampant again, it all might get canceled and we don't want that to happen.
Absolutely. Danny?
Uh, just to let you all know, uh, we've started going to a few schools and walking the stadiums. I, I can tell you, uh, how many bleachers there are and how long they are and how many people we can get on them. And, uh, we've done all that and with the social distancing, trust me. And in the next, uh, week, uh, we're going to schedule more visits and we will walk every school stadium with the principal and the graduation team. And then is what we're going to talk about while we're there is if we had parents there, what would that look like? And then each school is going to submit a very detailed and organized plan, which we would review and vet, uh, through Dr. Buchanan. And, uh, then we would be able to message that out. So, you know, uh, we would love to see it, uh, just going to depend on a lot of factors, but we're going to have a plan. Uh, Superintendent Thomas has challenged me with a bunch of plans, so we're trying to deliver the best we can.
And, and I think that the, the bottom line message is that for the parents of seniors out there is that we, we want to have graduation as much as you do. Like, maybe not as much, but like really close, like we really, really, really do. And so, um, we just have to be patient and we have to wait. And, um, and I know that Mr. Trent has put in many hours working on this already, and he has a lot more that he will be working on it. So, um, so Danny, thank you for all your time and effort that you've put in, and thank you Superintendent for your, uh, commitment to wanting to have hold graduations. Um, that, that's, um, we know that that's so important to our students and their families. So thank you. Yes, Mr. Trent, did you want to say something?
Carly Harrington's been instrumental in her team and then my two colleagues, I, I want to praise them. Uh, Tommy Watson, Celine Reynolds, and John Riser. Uh, there's been a whole lot of people and principals really gave us most of these ideals. So, uh, shout out goes to them, not me.
Well, thank you all. This, you know, there, there's so much more going on kind of with our team behind the scenes than what the public can see. And so I know, um, I know that, that, uh, you're all putting in so many more hours than people would, would even realize. So, um, thanks to all those folks that you mentioned. And, um, any other questions for Dr. Buchanan? Ms. Satterfield?
Yeah, and I don't know if this is for Dr. Buchanan or just for our team, but since we're still on it. Um, how, if, when we start our summer programs, I know we talked about opening up the schools to communities or community organizations, uh, June 1st. What does lunch pickups are, what are those, um, what does that look like from the, the Health Department side and also Knox County school side with the, um, the distribution of food pickups and all that? Is there a plan around that yet?
I, I will totally let the schools take that answer because, uh, they've done a great job so far with how they've organized that and gotten that taken care of. Um, and so I trust that they'll continue to do that.
Well, I know that within, yeah, I know. I know within the schools will, it's not necessarily Knox County schools, but I guess the question is, will we just follow what the, um, because I know the Health Department gives the go-go bo- the white boxes that you get for food and, and.
Actually, I don't think we do.
We, uh, we have an agenda item later that we can probably come back to that because we're going to, I think we have an agenda item to approve the summer, um, summer nutrition.
Okay, cool. I wasn't sure if it was her department or not. Okay, great.
Ms. Cottney?
Madam Chair, Ms. Bounds would like to, um, uh, say the following comment. Uh, my con- my concern when I received the recommendation is that students had to leave after receiving their diploma. Surely students should be allowed to stay until all students have received their diploma. Uh, she finds it troublesome for the, for the name to receive theirs in an empty stadium. If your last name were to start with Z, there would be no one there to watch. So that's her concern.
That's a good point. And it's certainly a valid concern. Um, uh, you know, that, again, I'll go back to this is, and I, I'm overusing this word, but this is an unprecedented time. And we, it, it, we can't, our expectations have to be changed, um, for this period in order for our community to move forward and continue to open and to have the hope of, of, and, and again, this is the plan as it stands now. Um, you know, we've pushed it out far enough that, you know, the other message would be to get your kids, especially your twenty-somethings, uh, to also follow the guidelines and wear their masks. Um, because they're an important part of infection control as well. Um, and I, and those are all, those are all valid concerns. I hate to not have parents there. I hate, I hate to think about the graduate having to leave and not be there to see his or her fellow graduates receive their diplomas. And, but we, you know, those are, those are all challenging things. And I'm hoping that everything will go better than I expect, but will go well and people will abide by the guidelines. And in, you know, by July, we'll be, we'll be, uh, a little more relaxed about how we can handle things. I'm hopeful.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Buchanan, I have one more that, that question that doesn't relate to graduations. Two weeks from today, we have a budget meeting or hearing, uh, to consider spending, I guess, approximately three quarters of a billion dollars. Now, I know we've announced that all meetings, uh, will be in the month of May, will be by June. But since it involves a very, very limited number of people, and we've seen the problems that we've had here. Could we not have that, uh, actually either in the AJ and scatter out? Or have it in the main assembly room and scatter, board members scatter out, everybody practice social distancing. And when you're talking about money and that sort of stuff, it's, there'll be a little bit of arguing, I'm relatively sure. Uh, there, it would be so much better, I guess, from the board's perspective if, would you consider, uh, opposing that?
Uh, that's actually guidance from the state and actually guidance from the governor and, uh, exception to rules for local meetings and local elected officials. So that is actually a call of the school's, uh, administration and the board. Um, that is not a call of, of my office.
You don't have anything to do with that.
So you have to, you have to be able to follow the recommendations as written, uh, by the state and, uh, for elect, for gatherings of elected bodies. I don't, I haven't read those, to be honest. Um, I know they made some exceptions to be able to allow y'all to meet, uh, uh, virtually. Um, but that will actually be a decision this body can make as long as you can follow all the social distancing guidelines. Um, I think there are more than 10 people on this call though, so I think that's.
Well, there are, and there'll be more than, than 10 people there. But they wouldn't necessarily be in the same room more than 10 or so at one time. And it, it was my understanding, I might be wrong, but that the governor had said that the counties that had their own health departments would, uh, attempt to follow the guidelines of the health departments or, or make adjustments.
And, and, and that is, no, no, you're correct. You're correct. That's, that's in regards to reopening and it is a little, it is not a little confusing. It's a lot confusing. Um, I'll just own that. Um, however, when it comes to elected bodies and what they can and can't do, um, our plan is, is silent on that except to set out general guidelines for different kinds of business meetings or elected body meetings and having to follow the, the guidelines as far as social distancing, wearing a face mask if, if needed and all those things. And then, and then the state made some changes and recommendations regarding elected bodies and how they could meet or not meet. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that the, um, the school administration and others have, uh, looked at that guidance and can understand that and interpret it based on the current situation. We are specifically writing, uh, guidance focused a lot on, on businesses and reopening businesses, not so much on how elected bodies, uh, uh, carry out their business. That's been more governed by the state and by the bodies.
Thank you. That makes a question. Uh, I guess, Mr. Trent or, or Superintendent, do you know of any reason, have you seen any guidelines from the state that would prohibit us from meeting, like I said?
I, I, I would need to look. Uh, Mr. McMillan, I have not seen anything, but, uh, that's not been, uh, from what guidelines have been published, it looked like it was not possible to do if it was more than 10 people. So, um, maybe Mr. Dupler may have more information on that, but be glad to do the, if, if he doesn't, we'll do the research on it and, and find out. I, you know, if, 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 if we do it, uh, you know, what's the penalty? I, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, we'd be glad to, to do a little bit more research on that and find, you know, try to get an answer.
I can imagine there being any penalty, but I would be, I'd be, uh, I appreciate you looking into it. Because I, I think that the, with what we're going to be talking about, it's just so much better to be able to, to see each other and, and, and talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into that. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, I can, I can say that, you know, I have read that executive order. Um, I don't, I don't have it in front of me. Uh, I mean, I mean, there could be a possibility, but I can tell you that it, it would certainly be a lot more complicated than what we're doing now. Uh, with only 10 people per room, you'd have to be looking at multiple rooms. You'd have to be looking at still using electronics to, uh, to assist. So, uh, you, you know, like, like Superintendent Thomas said, we can take a look at it, uh, conj- conjunctively. But, uh, uh, this, this is certainly, uh, a much more simpler solution to the, that executive order versus some type of hybrid, which is what I think we'd be looking at.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dupler. Dr. Buchanan, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate the partnership with the school system. And I know, uh, you work so closely with the superintendent and his team, and so we appreciate that and appreciate your guidance. Thank you.
Well, thank you for inviting me and thank, I truly appreciate the partnership with the schools. Um, and whether you, you're aware of it or not, it does not exist across our state um, that the Health Department and the schools have such a, a working, a good working relationship. So we appreciate the partnership as well. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Have a good evening. Okay, we will turn to the discussion of our regular session agenda. Um, you should have received an email yesterday regarding the addition of item 5C9, a consideration of an agreement for the use of the grouping PRO application. The agreement and fiscal note are attached to the electronic agenda for your review. And also, as you know, we have received several questions regarding item 8A, the one-to-one device deployment proposal. A list of questions and answers were shared with you via email earlier. And that has also been attached to the electronic agenda for the public, um, information. So if you're watching and you want to see that attachment, that is, um, on the meeting notice or the, um, agenda item, I'm sorry, the agenda tab. And, um, you can find that under item 8A, uh, 8E, and it answers a lot of questions that we've received from the community regarding the one-to-one. Um, so with that, we will go ahead and, and begin. Do we have any questions on contracts one or two? Okay, three or four? Five or six?
I've got a, I've got a question on five.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Norman.
This mainly for Gary. Uh, you know, Gary, given, given our, uh, discussions about Title IX and the equity con- Title IX and the equity concepts and so on, does it, i- is there something in, in, uh, in that issue that would affect an approval of something that obviously is gonna give an advantage to one, you know, to, to one sport over another?
It's a good question, Mr. Norman, and fortunately I've gone out and I've, I've talked to Principal Rob Spees out at Hardin Valley. I've also talked to the, uh, athletic director out there and, uh, Hardin Valley, similar to West High School, has a, a more comprehensive, um, foundation, athletics foundation. And they are looking at, uh, sports across the board, not just one particular sport. Uh, so, so I had the same concern that you did, but, but, but after meeting with them, um, after looking at the facilities, again, they are, that, they are looking at, at a more holistic approach. So I don't see that as a concern for this particular item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question regarding, um, item six.
Okay, go ahead.
Now that I know what department we're in.
There we go. That's where you.
She just had all the rules, so I figured she would be the one. Um, so Superintendent Thomas or whoever may answer this, how will this, um, go about? Is it going to be similar to what we're doing with the pickups now? And is that going to be the expectation for parents to come pick up the boxes during the summertime?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Oaks has any more information or if, uh, Brett, our, um, uh, child nutrition director is on the line to help with this. From my understanding, of course, it's, it'll be done the traditional way, but knowing that things are different today, I feel more comfortable maybe if, uh, either, uh, this, uh, Ms. Brett Foster or Mr. Oaks, uh, addresses that. And you asked a question a few minutes ago about facilities. I know it's not exactly part of that, but I'd just like to say, we've been in conversation with folks that, uh, that utilize our buildings for daycare kinds of activities and that sort of thing. So we expect those to be made available to the folks that we have contracted and have contracts with. Um, one thing that, uh, I need to be getting back to the board on is, uh, fee. They've asked for a waiver of fees, um, and, and for this year and, and understandably so, but, uh, those, uh, trying to get, uh, folks back to work as best we can. And, uh, so we're working with our partners, uh, on providing facilities like we have done in the past as long as the, uh, guidelines provided by the health department are adhered to. But, uh, let me go back to the, the CAC question and I don't know, Mr. Oaks, uh, if you've got a response.
Uh, yes, Brett's on the, Brett's on the line and we'll be doing this similar to the way that we've done in, uh, previous summers, but I'll let her walk through the details of how we do that with CAC.
Okay, so we will be transitioning to summer feeding starting on May twenty-sixth, and I have been working with CAC and it is their intention for the programs that are allowed to operate in the schools or other, um, locations to be able to utilize the same model we have always in the past where CAC will deliver the meals to those sites and they will have it as a part of their programming. But we've also been working on trying to locate sites to do mobile meal pickups that are close to our schools. And so it won't be the exact same sites, but I have been working with CAC to identify areas where they can set up a mobile meal pickup for, um, families that are not participating in programming to pick up meals if they would like to.
Thank you. Is the mobile aspect that I would like to get, you know, clarity on, um, versus just the traditional way? Cause I'm familiar with the tr- traditional way, but the mobile aspect, because I know a lot of summer programs might not even happen this summer. And so there's still kids out there that will need that type of access. And so whenever you get that full clarification, that'd be great.
Well, they have been working on setting up sites based on our meal count, so I've been sending those to them so they know how many to possibly expect. And we talked about possibly doing a survey to see how many families and what sites they would be most interested in so we can better plan since it is a different model than what we've done in years past. Um, but their intention is to kind of follow the same model we have at least through June thirtieth because that's how long the waiver lasts for us to be able to do mobile meals, which it may be extended. But, um, at least through June thirtieth, it is their intention to follow a very similar model to what we've been doing right now with a Monday, Wednesday pickup with multiple meals at each, each pickup time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foster, for joining us. Um, any other questions on six? Okay, item seven or eight?
Seven.
Okay, Ms. Owen?
Can somebody talk to us about, um, what kind of, uh, reports we'll get back from this benchmarking?
Mr. Oaks?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, what this benchmarking does is we have some, uh, uh, reception and transmission issues, uh, in some of our buildings with our E nine-one-one digital, uh, system and, uh, the way, uh, some of our buildings are constructed, uh, uh, helps for, for handlers, uh, that, uh, that transmissions. So the intent with this, uh, project is, uh, the company will analyze each of our sites, uh, for signal strength and then come back and identify for us, uh, the, uh, specific areas we need to address or the specific corrections we need to make in order to be able to have a reliable signal, uh, throughout the building. And I, I know I had some, uh, instability on my, uh, connection there. I don't know if y'all heard all that or not.
I think so. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on item seven? Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
Could y'all hear me?
Yes, we heard you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on, any questions on eight? Okay, um, questions on nine? We have, um, we have Mr. Cantrell and Ms. Harper from Bluegrass who are, um, who are on the call. Would you, would one of you like to just briefly tell us about this, just so that board members and other school-wide folks are aware of this? Mr. Cantrell?
Yeah, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Warren, okay. It, uh, um, my internet's going in and out. I apologize. Um, so this is a, a program. We're here tonight to kind of give a brief overview to the board. Um, it's a, it's a grouping program that helps in the distribution of students in the classes for the, for the next new school year. So in, in a nutshell, if you're familiar with the elementary world, uh, you may know that the process is daunting. It's time-consuming. Uh, teachers are filling out handwritten cards for each student and then standing around, uh, several hours trying to create, you know, the perfect class. So then the admin, they, you know, would sit around for hours, uh, with these hundreds of cards trying, at a table, trying to, to make sure the classes have an equal number of boys, girls, it's equitable distribution of high, average, low students, et cetera. Uh, so what the program does, uh, you know, everything's on the computer. Teachers receive an email questionnaire, uh, that, you know, the principals create. Uh, the teacher will mark those questionnaires, that they're, they're dropdown menus. It's done in fifteen or twenty minutes. Then the principal just simply, um, groups it from there by, by, you know, clicking a button, which distributes the students into classes. So from there, the principal can then fine-tune those classes however they see fit. There's graphs, visuals that help them make the, the best decisions. Yeah, and, and really, Ms. Harper, I feel, you know, the program couldn't have gotten completed at a better time because it, it really does support social distancing. Everything can be done from home. Um, and, you know, so, and we actually had the privilege of sharing the program with, with, um, Knox County Technology Teams and with, with Mr. Dupler to kind of look over it and get a legal standpoint. Uh, we wanted to share it with the board, uh, just kind of get your approval on letting all Knox County principals use it. And of course, obviously with us working for Knox County, we feel like we are Knox County. Uh, that program would never be any charge, uh, to our school system. Um, you know, of course, we provide all the training support needed as well. And the tech team has already offered support, I, I know through Aspen and those type of things, uh, moving forward. So, and if you have any questions, you know, we'd be happy to, to answer any of those.
Thank you so much. Um, sounds like it would be a huge help to principals and, and elementary teachers. Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. We'll move on to board policies. So you should have the attached resolution that lists several policies that we will, that the, um, resolution, resolution states that we would be temporarily suspending those for the remainder of the year. Any questions on those? Okay, moving on to grants. Any questions on A or B? Okay, C or, let's see, C or D? Okay, moving into regular agenda items. Questions on A? Questions on B? C? Questions on D? Ms. Bab?
Um, yes, I just wanted to address some questions that I've received about concerns. And I mean, I've talked to Mr. Oaks about this, but I just would like it publicly discussed just so that people who've asked the question know that the discussion's gone on. Um, about, obviously, I'm very excited that we found some property for the elementary school for Northwest, um, Knoxville. Um, there are some concerns for some people about the road, uh, issues there and, um, I guess it's real narrow roads and, you know, putting a school there. And then actually I saw some people on Facebook today talking about also there's a housing development going up also. So there's going to be a lot more traffic on the existing roads. Um, so if Mr. Oaks could just address that and what he has found out about how that should be addressed by the time the school is completed.
Mr. Oaks?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, first, I'd, I'd like to say, we, we believe this is a, a, a really good site, uh, for us and it's, it's location, uh, geographically, uh, we think is very sound. Uh, the road network going into it, uh, is not perfect. But it is not dissimilar from, uh, road networks that we, uh, schools on and we operate on in different areas of the county. Currently, uh, on our, on the end of Coward Mill, uh, where this property is, uh, we can access largely through Reagan Road. But the county also has an extension of, uh, Charahalla Road, uh, to, in, from Hardin Valley into, uh, the Coward Mill, uh, which, uh, enters Coward Mill basically at our property site. And, uh, that, uh, extension of that road has been, uh, green-lighted and, uh, it has been funded. And, uh, the county engineer indicates, uh, to me that, uh, it will probably be finished or they expect it to be finished, uh, well before we even begin construction.
Okay.
Can I ask just one follow-up question?
Continue that, that, that will allow us several different ways to access it. There's also a planned, uh, extension, uh, further, uh, to the north of Charahalla that would take it, uh, into, provided access to, uh, Mississippi. Yeah.
Um, one, one follow-up question. Is the, um, extension, the Charahalla, I believe, road, is it, it's a county project that's being done?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so the county, y'all have been in contact and the county feels like it will be finished sufficiently to meet the needs of this.
Yes, ma'am. I got that information directly from, uh, Jim Snowden, uh, Director of County Engineer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oaks. Other questions or comments? Okay. And then we'll move to our final item, um, regarding one-to-one student device deployment. Mr. Thomas, would you like to go ahead and start this conversation, please?
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly set the stage for this proposal because I know there's a great deal of interest, not only from the board, but also from our students and families and, and teachers. Uh, let me begin by saying that providing an electronic device to every student is, is not intended, and then let me repeat, is not intended to replace the work of teachers in the classroom. We know there's not a replacement for a teacher in the classroom. Uh, but in the last few weeks, many of us have participated in meetings using Zoom or other online platforms. And I think we've all realized how much is lost when you can't meet in person. And even Mr. McMillan, I think, made a good point with that, too. At the same time, we do believe that technology can help teachers and enhance instruction and improve student engagement, not only during an extended closure, but, but also in the traditional classroom setting. Uh, during the extended closure, one of our primary concerns has been our ability to provide equitable and accessible instruction to all students. Uh, we would, uh, hope that this will help us to resolve that issue. And certainly you have to make sure that, uh, not only, uh, every student has a computer or laptop, but also, uh, has, has access to the internet. Uh, given the uncertainty around COVID nineteen, we believe it's important to prepare for the possibility, I'll say the possibility, that our campuses could be closed again at some point during the fall. Providing a device to every student, also known as becoming a one-to-one district, will allow us to give our students the tools and materials that they need for remote learning. Specifically, our hope is that to, is providing a device to every student would give us more options during an extended closure, including the ability to cover new material or give mandatory assignments. And, you know, those have been a couple of issues that, uh, I know have been concerning to the board, concerning to us and also concerning, uh, to our parents. Uh, so we want to be able to make sure we can introduce new, new material and have mandatory assignments, and this would allow us to do that. If we are able to open as planned in the fall, we believe there are still advantages of providing every student with an electronic device. The use of technology is, is essential requirement in the twenty-first century job market. The community expects our students to understand technology and it's clear that these skills will be important for students, whatever their future plans might be. I'd also point out that we've been discussing technology enhancements for years, uh, and literally that's years, but have largely relied on parents and fundraisers to make that happen. And, and we are very appreciative of the parents and, and fundraisers to allow this to happen. But this proposal gives us the opportunity to fund such an effort at the district level where it really, it should be funded and free up dollars at the school level. From a teaching and learning perspective, we believe this proposal could extend learning opportunities beyond the traditional school day, uh, would also give us additional flexibility for responding to closures related to inclement weather or the flu. And finally, it's been helpful to watch as many of our post-secondary partners, including institutions like the University of Tennessee and Penn State have made the transition to online instruction. Uh, while the logistics of K-12 education are obviously very different from the college setting, uh, we do believe that their success with the remote learning could be an example for our school district. I do appreciate the chance to share some brief thoughts about this important proposal. And with that, uh, I know Mrs., Mrs. Gail Byard, our chief technology officer is online and also, uh, Dr. Ryswick, our Assistant Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer, uh, that can talk a little bit more about the details of the initiative. So, uh, if board, board permitting, I know, now you may have questions and we'll certainly be glad to address those too. But I would like to, uh, give Mrs. Byard an opportunity to, uh, talk about the purchase and also, uh, uh, Dr. Ryswick to talk about the implementation and so forth. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Gail, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've got the easy part. I'm going to talk to you about devices and, uh, honestly, the real work is, uh, is going to be under, um, John's discussion. But, uh, as you know, we've been doing one-to-one technology to some extent in this district for a number of years, um, in a pilot sort of setting. But since that time and since the initial devices were purchased, um, we have seen a surge in the use of Chromebooks in our schools. And like Mr. Thomas said, that's primarily because school activity funds, um, parent organizations, foundations have purchased them. It's not the general purpose fund that's been funding those devices. We currently have about forty thousand Chromebooks in use in our district. That's the good news. The bad news is they reach an end of life at a point and we are slowly or very quickly, I guess, approaching. I guess, approaching that end of life. Most of our existing Chromebooks will go out of support at the end of next school year. So those devices that have been paid for with hard earned fundraiser monies will no longer be supported by the operating system. So we have a lot of experience with the Chromebooks, and particularly the newer model of those older ones that I described. What we're proposing with the CARES Act funding is an opportunity to provide a current device for students that will last at least five years. The devices that we're proposing are guaranteed to be under support until June of 2026. So we're really proposing taking the burden of providing student devices off of schools and parent organizations. Using these one-time dollars, we can create a sustainable technology line item in the budget. We are proposing enough devices for every student, K-12, and to pay for them over three budget years, even though we expect them to last at least five years. In K-2, we know that that has been the source of some questions. We have proposed a slightly more expensive device that has touchscreen capability and can actually operate as a tablet for the primary grade students. In addition to the student devices, we want to begin a sustainability account to replace staff devices. On a five-year cycle, we would start with the oldest staff computers first, and by about a thousand a year, these are not Chromebooks, these are laptops, either Windows or Mac, depending on the school. And then also in this project, we would want to purchase protective cases and software to address off-network content filtering, to keep students away from harmful and inappropriate content when they're at home. We are also proposing a sustainable repair budget that would be funded through a parent insurance option. Thirty dollars would be the insurance option for parents, which would cover any damage that occurred to the device during the school year. And this would be placed in a self-insurance fund that would pay for parts and repairs. And I can tell you, because we have experience with these devices, the least expensive repair on these Chromebooks will be right at thirty dollars. So anything over that would be covered additionally within that insurance option. If a parent chooses not to opt into the insurance, then they would be billed per occurrence for anything that was damaged on the device. It's important to note that Chromebooks allow for sort of what we call hot swapping. In other words, if a person at a school is designated with a set of Chromebooks that are sort of the spares, if a student comes in with a device that's not working, it's just a matter of minutes for them to swap out with a working device. And then our technicians come and pick up that inoperable, inoperable device and fix it. That's because there's not data stored on the device, it's actually in cloud storage. So that allows us to swap the device out very quickly and not have the student going to class or home without the device, whichever the case may be. We are concerned, like Doc, like Mr. Thomas mentioned, about internet at home for staff and students. We are currently working with community partners, and I know Dr. Ryswick will talk a little bit more about that, to establish where we are with that respect and to determine what our community can do to help us with families who either can't afford or really can't access broadband internet in their, in their area where they live. We know that additional concerns have been voiced around specific hardware needs for some particular programs and, and individual students. And as we do currently, we will address those with either under the umbrella of the CTE program, or special ed, or whatever department is pertinent to that. So I don't want you to think that this is simply a one-size-fits-all, although we are attempting to be equitable with this purchase. It's not the case that we will ignore the specific needs of, of students and programs. So our timeline is, if the board approves next week, we will be able to place the order. We would expect to receive the devices that will be asset-tagged and enrolled in our Knox County Schools Enterprise by the first week in August, so they would be ready to hand out to students. At that point, we would determine where we are with respect to opening schools and determine how they're going to be used. And with that, if you have questions for me, or I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Ryswick.
Let's go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Ryswick, if you'll hold your questions. And then we'll come back to, we'll come back to Gail after Dr. Ryswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll just, I'll have a whole add to what Gail said. I think she did a really good job of, of kind of, you know, painting the picture of the scope of what we're hoping to do with this. You know, I would say, I hate the conditions, I think we all do, that, that we're being able to consider us, but I think there are a lot of possibilities for the future, as well as what we're, you know, going to do, be able to do, depending on what happens in the fall. I think it, it really helps our district kind of get up to par for what our students need, what we know when they get into college. And post-secondary is, a lot of that is online, the world they navigate. Looking at Noah right now, knowing his world is pretty much, and will continue to be those kinds of things moving forward. And, and we've always felt that, that that was what we kind of owed our students, was that opportunity to have that. Want to echo what Mr. Thomas said, in no way have we ever thought that it's meant to be a replacement, it's really meant to be a tool for teachers. And, and we're excited about that opportunity, because we have a lot of teachers, I think this is the thing, too, in the conversation I had with Teresa Nixon the other day. You know, this is work that we have been doing for, for eight years. I mean, she reminded me, Ellen Ince was our first one-to-one school launched eight years ago, and we know how successful that school has been for, for a lot of reasons. But we know especially, you know, they have been very technologically savvy in that. We've had lots of schools, we've been successful in launching a large high school like Bearden High School, a large middle school like West Valley Middle School into kind of a one-to-one. And, you know, we've seen some of the effects and some of the positive things that can come for that. So, you know, this isn't a, a, a brand-new idea. It's something that we have wanted to do, and we've built some expertise with Gail's department, and then also with, with Teresa's department. We've, we've become much more efficient at training teachers and, and building it and out things like Canvas, having that as our learning management system. Aspen has had a lot of new things with that. You know, we've looked at some Google platform things, Microsoft Teams as part of the package we have. So there's a lot of these things that our teachers have been familiar with, and we're also, you know, eyes wide open, understand there's a lot of teachers who haven't done some of those kinds of things. So I would just say this, ideally, in an ideal situation, this is probably a one-to-two-year rollout, even though we have built a lot of expertise on that. Unfortunately, our current situation that we're facing as a nation doesn't allow us one to two years to roll this out. So we'll roll it out as best we can with what we've learned and what we've learned from other districts, and what we've learned from the expertise within. We have plenty of principals and teachers and staffs that have been doing this and doing this successfully for, for quite a few years. But we also understand there'll be glitches, and there'll be some snafus when you're rolling that out. But for us, we think the good definitely outweighs the challenges that we face, and we really think it will help us get our kids ready for, for life after, after they leave us. So with that, I'll just, I mean, we, we have said this, too, we have a lot of our support folks that are on, on as well, who can probably answer specific questions to that, and I'll just pass that on to them if there are questions that come to me.
You know, John, before we, before we get to questions, can you answer, you may be able to answer two that I know that people will have, that I've just kind of jotted down. Gail mentioned the internet situation for students who don't have it at their homes, and also if you'll touch on, or maybe Shannon wants to touch on teacher training over the...
Sure, I'll take our first one. You know, there, there are two parts, as Gail said, to this equation. The first is having the device for, for students to have that. And then, and we think, you know, hopefully this is taking care of that. And then the other is internet accessibility. So two things that are very promising in our community, what, what we realize is that internet accessibility is not just a Knox County Schools issue, it's the greater Knox County and Knoxability issue. And so I think we've been encouraged, the chamber, under Mike Odom, and I think Amy Nolan has taken the lead kind of that for them, and the chamber have put together a working task force that we have representation on, really trying to look at that, because I think they understand that there's, it's not just a Knox County Schools benefit, but Pell City could benefit from more internet access, you know, UT Knoxville could benefit from that, as well as just economic development. And as a whole, if we were a community that really offered some more broadband options. You know, we need help with that. Obviously, there can't just be a schools initiative, but we're happy to be at the table on, with the chamber in that. And then we were encouraged, the superintendent and Keith and myself were invited to be part of a committee that the, the mayors have put together as well, looking at just how can the community, not, not specific to the internet, but what can the community do to come around schools? And this included President Boyd and President Wise from Pell City and from UT, as well as Bill Heisman, I think, was the one who was asked to, to chair that by both mayors. So very, we had kind of wanted to talk through that, but it came up time and time again that this internet accessibility. And it's not just, we think about sometimes socioeconomics in certain parts of the community, but also there are more rural parts of the community that don't have that kind of coverage. And we have a few principals on that committee as well, who, who brought that up. So I don't know that there's an immediate answer to that, kind of what our Band-Aid can be in the meantime, or kind of hotspots, but realistically, that's probably not a solution. You know, they're hard to track, they're easy to get lost. You know, they're, they can be costly as well. So we, we probably, we have that ability to patch in some of those kinds of situations, but we really think the solution may be a broader community solution in the long run for that one. And as far as teacher training, Shannon, I'll let you address that one. You guys have put together a great plan.
Sure. Um, okay, yeah, I, I'll give an overview, and then I'm going to let Teresa talk more about this. As John said earlier, this is work that we've been engaging in for about the last eight years. And I would say, over the last four or five, we've been very intentional about all of the initiatives that we've been working on in our district, gathering teachers together who are building success and expertise in some areas, pulling them together through demonstration classrooms, leadership councils, various opportunities for them to come and inform us on what's working well, and then using, you know, our, our systems to be able to collect what's working and share with others. So as we started to see this situation evolve, we already had a group of users at the elementary, middle, and high school level, both teachers and principals, who have a lot of experience. And I asked Teresa to go ahead and start coordinating with them, to think about what are some lessons, what are some experiences that we can pull together and share with our colleagues across the district, and think about this, not so much as training, but as learning together, how to best support our students. And as, as John said, our, our message in this is that the teacher is the critical component in delivering education. The device is a tool that we can use to stay connected when we have to be remote and far away from each other. But there are also some things that we're learning that we need to make sure we take back with us when we're in in-person situations. And so how do we capitalize on all of that? And so we've been thinking through the model of starting with what we want those learning outcomes to be, the, the ideal practices that go along with that, and then what does that look like in successive approximations of the ideal, depending on whether or not we're allowed to be face-to-face, we're in a blended situation, or we're fully remote. So that's kind of the umbrella of what we've been thinking about, and Teresa has really been doing the legwork of pulling together in a heroic amount of time. Lots of groups to give feedback and to inform the plan that we have developed at this point. So I'll, I'll toss it to Teresa.
So thank you, Madam Chair and the board. It's been really my great pleasure. I've been in this role now for seven years, and as both John and Shannon have said, this has been part of the journey. We have really informed our plan based on listening to our stakeholders and really partners in the journey, I would really say, just even thinking about starting with Ellen Ince and to the number of schools that have embedded technology or fully are one-to-one. But basically, we will begin this Friday by sharing with teachers two different types of training. One is a social-emotional training that will come out of Janice Cook's School Culture Office, because we realize that a lot of the work is foundational to be able to enter into learning, and we need to take care of our emotional side of that, the social-emotional piece. And then also will be just some Canvas kind of 101. But it will also be for people in schools who may have already been one-to-one in using our learning management system, being able to engage as, not only as a student, but also to learn about some of the features as a leader as well, because Canvas has been great. They continue to create new features. Every month, we get new features that are added in, and so updating folks on those. And then the basic overview of the plan will be, we will cast our vision. We will then, in June, begin with school-level plans for what we're calling and labeling reimagined learning, and it's intentional, because we understand that reimagine is a verb, and it's continual. For example, the example I used earlier was the way we taught reading maybe 10 years ago might look really different now, because we've learned more about brain research. And so we just continue to reimagine what our classrooms look and sound like. And so with that, the overview of the reimagined learning will have a casting our vision, which will be grounded and anchored in our district strategic plan, which we think is very important to anchor in the standards and our content. Then it will be foundational for people to understand how classroom culture, as well as our concept around thinking about student ownership, are foundational before we even begin talking about what the technology might look and sound like. Then, kind of the next group is thinking about the digital learning spectrum and how students might engage, as Shannon said, in either fully, we are at normal schedule, and we're face-to-face, and blending in some of the technology within the classroom. But when situations are less than ideal, really thinking through what might the other options be. We are going to highlight some of the digital learning tools and some best practices and lessons learned there. And then really diving in on some content-specific thinking. I know that we have had some great learning when we implemented some of our early adopters for one-to-one. There might have been some ways in which we, that a device was used maybe in lieu of instruction, or rather than complementing and as a tool. And that is really what, as we've developed the plan, which I had 58 administrators, coaches, central office, and teachers, basically, who helped feed into this plan, plus the previous seven years of me being in this role. And then really developing this course right now that will go live in June. We have 70 people who are serving in different modular teams, all bringing varied stakeholder positions. Prior to it going live, we will be offering for any, for a variety of different people to be able to preview the content and offer us feedback before we push that out. So I really believe it's a collective plan from across the district, and all of our lessons learned while also being informed by national research.
Right, thank you so much for all of those overviews. Hopefully, that will help get our discussions off to a good start. Do we have questions who'd like to start? Ms. Bab?
Sure, I mean, first, a couple of comments. I would just say, a couple of schools in my district are already one-to-one, and I do know they just felt the frustration, because as a district, we are not that way, but they felt handicapped in this sort of situation, that they could not continue with learning in a way that they thought they were set up to, because we, as a district, are not set up. So I do really support trying to get all of our district on the same level of technology. My big question, and I'm not really sure who to address this is, addresses to, is more the financial side of it, and really the plan that was given to us that we're voting on. So who would be the best person, is Ron, or I don't know who the best person on the money side is. I kind of just don't understand it a little bit, and I mean, I'm, I'm not the finance person, so I'll just do that. But we talk about a three-year lease payment of five million, so I didn't understand if the five million is an upfront, or if that's five million every year for three years, and then the devices last for five years. That's one of the questions. And then the secondary question on money is, with the CARES Act, we're seeing that there's about $12 million that should come to us. And I've been, I saw something that maybe a million might have to go out to charter schools, other areas, but then that still would leave a few million dollars. And so I'm kind of questioning, what are we looking at? Because I know there are certain parameters with the CARE Act, and I'm getting a lot of questions from my community about that, so this is a lot of why I'm addressing it. So I know I've wrapped a lot of questions into that, Ron, but maybe you're the one to answer.
Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, thanks. I'll sure give it a, a try. A lot of the questions, Ms. Bab, you're asking, we are, we're asking the same. A lot of the questions, Ms. Bab, you're asking, we are, we're asking the same questions from the state. And apparently the state's asking the same questions from the feds. So the the annual investment cost is is $7 million. That includes about $5 million or more, a little bit more than that maybe for the lease cost, plus the supports to go with it. Yeah, and and the plan would be, you know, with the board's blessing, the plan would be that we would utilize the CARES Act money for that. That is, that is easily shown to be an allowable use based on the guidance we've had. So the CARES Act money is about $12.8 million. You're right, about a, we estimate maybe a million dollars of that will go out the door. We're still trying to get an exact figure on that, but there is a requirement to pass those dollars on to private schools and the charter, like we would do with Title I monies or other federal monies like IDEA and so forth. So yeah, we're probably looking at about 8, 11.8 if, to go along with that assumption. So $7 million off of that amount would leave us with about $4.8 million. There's a couple of options there. We could park that money and partially fund year two with with that. We could take that money and potentially try to close part of the budget gap with that. That's what we're trying to get get guidance on if we decided to do that. I think it's important to note too, that though this is one-time money, pretty much anything we would do with this money would be recurring, whether it's devices or otherwise, because our needs are recurring. There is, we've reached out to the state and said, based on the information we have received, it would appear that if we so, if we chose to do this, we could utilize these dollars to help fund the fund the fund the gap. We said it in a different way, but ultimately it's to save positions. So the response I got back from the state was somewhat noncommittal. It was, we're trying to get more information from the feds and so forth. I was given another name from the state. I reached out to that person and haven't received, yet to receive a response. So we're going to keep pressing on that for an answer. They did indicate that they're going to come out with, they plan to come out with an FAQ. Because I suspect they're getting a lot of these questions from other districts too. And they suggested that FAQ would come out within a couple of weeks. So, you know, a lot of this is, is, I hate to say guesswork, but that's kind of 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 what we're operating on absent of, you know, very detailed guidance at this point. I I could tell you my best guess, and I could be wrong, but my best guess is is ultimately, we would be allowed to use some of these funds to help close the budget gap. I think we just have to be careful and not deem it as as replacing revenue. It would have to be more along the lines of of saving positions. We did the same thing with the ARAMoney back about 10 years ago. But but again, you know, a lot of this is speculation until we can get more more detailed information.
Okay, can I ask one more question back about the the $7 million for the devices? I guess a little bit of my question is, it looks like it's a three-year payment. And we're talking about these devices should last five years. So should there be a fourth and fifth year where we wouldn't have to be paying the lease on them?
Presumably, the answer to that would be yes. So, you know, we could come, we don't, I mean, of course, that's three years, three, down the road. But so, yes, that's the short answer. You know, we could say, well, hey, that's a, that's a budget savings for the next two years. Problem is, is once you you use that money, now you're looking at another addition back to the budget again, trying to find that money. There's a couple of options. We could take it as a budgetary savings, but but just we would know that, hey, we don't have a funding stream dedicated for that in future years. We wouldn't be trying to climb that mountain again. The other option would be that we would kind of smooth those payments out. Maybe we don't make a $7 million. In other words, we would set up a a technology reserve to where we could kind of get a running start in 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 future years. So you may want to set aside $4 million in year or $3 million or whatever in year one, another $3 million in year two, which will be four and five. Then you 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 have some money available going into the, going into the next year's budget. So essentially, you're you're adopting a sustainability or a financial sustainability plan for for future devices down the road. So it wouldn't be $7 million. So it's ultimately, it could be $4 million a year. But by that time, you're, you have the money in the budget. So ultimately, yes, I think there's a budgetary savings there. It's just a question is how to, how would we want to capture it?
Okay, no, that that helped me a lot. I just, I kind of kept getting a little bit confused just about the numbers and how they were laid out. So thank you for explaining that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, we have other questions?
Let's see. Susan?
Yes.
Oh, it worked. Can you, or Gail Vard, address? I know we all got that email from Daniel Watson regarding the visually impaired students. Could Gail kind of address that as to, or John, how many visually impaired students that we have? And I know that the information we received said that Chromebooks would not be a good device for them. So are there plans to purchase something different for some of the special needs areas or the visually impaired? Whoever can answer that?
Yeah, Gail, if if that would be you, or whoever wants to respond to that. But Jason, do you want to take that? But also, if you'll just kind of expand on, you know, other, we have a lot of, a lot of kids with IEPs. So would there be a variety of devices for those, for that, for those needs?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Bounds. Yeah, you know, that 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 email prompted obviously some, some, some discussion that I'd already been having within my department. Summer Tucker supervises our our vision programming and a number of other programs for us. So we're already in the process of not just determining what children may need different devices, but what those devices might be. We're also in the middle of applying for grant dollars through the State Department of Ed that we will hopefully use to purchase additional devices that really are going to be geared toward that accessibility. Ms. Bounds, I don't have a specific number in terms of the number of children who are visually impaired in the Knox County schools. But what I can tell you is that we do have a have a full department committed to that. And we do provide robust programming for those students. The spirit of an IEP is is obviously to be individualized. And just like our practice would be now, if an IEP team determined that a particular device would not be appropriate and we should look in a different direction for that specific child, then then we would, we would get that device for that child. And so that's, that'll be our, that's our approach now. That'll be our approach moving forward. But we are in the, in the process of doing some front end work on that so that my folks can work with Gail and her team and sort of preempt some of those needs as we're, as we're walking through this process together.
Okay, thank you. Susan, I have another question.
Here, go ahead.
Okay. I know that we have seen several emails, the whole board has. One from Dr. Roundtree, one from Natasha Page about the K through two use of the Chromebooks. And I understand from Ms. Barrett that they're looking at a more expensive device for K through one. So if she could just speak a little bit to that. Because I know that as a former kindergarten teacher, it really concerns me. And I was glad to hear that they were looking at some other options. Not that we don't need to be teaching keyboarding, but some of that's developmental and their fingers just aren't capable of doing that. So I guess that would be a question from Ms. Barrett to explain a little bit more about what they're looking at for K through one.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be happy to address the device issue. What we're looking at is what's referred to as a two-in-one device. So it is a Chromebook. But it, if you can imagine the back flipping over and becoming a tablet, I'm sure all of you have seen children who are able to interact with phones and iPads and the the touchscreen technologies. So we recognize that. As far as the the pedagogy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this ball to Dr. Roswick and his crew on the.
I'll jump in. Thank you, Ms. Bounds. Thanks, Gail. I'll, I'll jump in for a second, and I may specifics to that, Ms. Bounds, have Shannon speak to. I just, I think this would be a good time hearing Jason's question. I know Keith saw, and there may be questions for CTE that come up as well. I think I just, I just want to kind of let us think for a second that the classroom will have more options, right, with this technology in the classroom? But what we don't see is it, is is the classroom drastically changing? I think there's kind of visions of what it can be, and some teachers will take it to a level and some won't be comfortable in doing that. And we're fine with both of those. We've seen that again, if you go down in STEM or a school that is kind of that way, you'll see kind of that at different levels. So, you know, we don't see kindergarten through second grade classes. We still see, you know, rugs with squares. We still see big books being read to kids and, you know, and and kids reading those back to teachers and questions being asked and small group rotations. I mean, all those kinds of things, I think, will look, but what could look different is when kids are in small groups rotating, there might be a technology station where they're doing these touchpads and doing that kind of thing too. So I just want to make sure, you know, same thing with special ed. Nothing's changing with those kinds of things. We're still going to continue. CTE, you know, Keith and I talked about it too. You know, that will, these won't be replacing what we already do for those kinds of things if extra equipment's needed and and that kind of thing. I think if we think of it kind of like as a pencil they take from class to class, they'll have this Chromebook or or this other touchpad device they can take from class to class. But all of those things that are specific to that or within that teacher's current wheelhouse, we'll be asking them to continue to do that. So sorry, I just wanted to say that. And Shannon, if you would, if you may, could speak to that.
Sure. K2 is probably our biggest area of concern too, as we started thinking about those appropriate uses. We do want our students, we've talked about this a lot with our groups that are developing the training. We want young students who are learning to write to do that on paper and pencil. And so when we're doing that in the classroom, we are able to have that instruction and the teacher can lean in and see that and model it and and give that that feedback. They can, you know, stand and do the motions with their hands and all the things that that, you know, our care program and our writing program has embedded in it. But when they are separate and we're in an extended period of closure, the device will also allow the teacher to interact with the students, to continue to lead them through some of that. And they may tell them it it's time to get out your paper and your pencil. And so the students will be doing that work on paper, but the the teacher will be able to to direct that. That's in, of course, the, you know, the most remote situation and and one that is not ideal. We really want that the teachers in the classroom together. So we're looking at some some different options. We do know the students will have to know how the devices work in order to be able to use them. So there will be some training that happens in those young classrooms, but that won't be the focus of the youngest classrooms. We're also looking at some efficiencies. So we know that it's really important for our young students to be able to read out loud. If they all have a device, then one of the things that, you know, there are some possibilities that we can be thinking of. And I'll tell you, the most amazing thing about getting teachers together is they come up with all kinds of creative ideas. And, you know, one of them is that students who maybe don't have anybody to read to at home are able to read to their device. And the teacher can then hear their recording and hear those students reading in the evening. So we're trying to think about not just replacing what we do with instruction with a device, but thinking about how the device can, you know, we really have three things we think about. Does it make us more efficient? Does it increase engagement? And does it deepen critical thinking? And so if the answer to that is yes, then we have some strategies that we may want to use and build on. But sometimes also the best tool, and we're making this clear in our training too, is a a piece of paper and a pencil. So we don't want anybody to think we're throwing out all the good strategies that we know are effective. We're looking at this as a layer of support that that can help our our students and our teachers remain connected in those disconnected times.
Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate you and Dr. Roswick both addressing that. And I think that will reassure a lot of the early primary grade teachers out there that already have concerns about how rigorous and robust our learning is and how it's been pushed down from the upper grades to the lower grades and sometimes developmentally inappropriate. So, and there are good uses. And the one you shared is very exciting. That would be a wonderful way to utilize that device. So I appreciate you all thinking through that, and thank you both for answering that question.
Another question that I think we read that if if one of you would touch on was a question about whether students would actually carry the device, particularly elementary students. Would they be carrying devices home every day? Would somebody like to comment on that?
I'd be happy to take it, Ms. Horn. I'll take a shot at it. So I just realized my camera's not on.
I know.
It might be advantage for the public. No, kidding. So, you know, our our goal is, we understand, you know, that our system is diverse. It's got lots of different principles, lots of different communities. And and I think what what we're not interested in is forcing any of those kinds of things down. And your question about, you know, how often does it go home, what goes home, those kinds of things. I think one thing we learned, and Teresa was a big part of that years ago when we did the one-to-one initiative, was kind of one size doesn't fit all. So communities are different. I can remember when Cory Ten went one-to-one, I can remember it was very different than than West Valley Middle School going one-to-one. So we're hopeful that we can do this in a pace that makes sense for those communities and for what those principals are comfortable with and what those teachers are comfortable with. Of course, the game changer is, as as the superintendent alluded to, we don't know what the fall holds. We hope that it's not a situation where we have to go into a quicker deployment because school could be suspended or delayed or those kinds of things. And that would change everything. We would have to kind of, you know, make sure we got the devices out and and we're going through some of those things. But we don't have a plan to say, you know, no kindergartners, take them home, or all kindergartners have to take them home. I think we would like to leave that up to the schools to make that choice. And I know Julie's on the call too, and she may have an opinion on that as well. But I think it's, you know, what we've learned is it's best left to what the school can work out to do that way. But I would, I would defer to Julie.
Okay, thank you. Julie, would you like to comment on that? Okay, we may not have her. Okay, do we have other comments or questions? I I would like to commend the staff for answering. I think, I know, I know I had sent a list of questions, and I'm sure a lot of other board members had also. I think you've, you've addressed many of those questions. I'm sure that we've missed some of those, but but we've addressed, you've addressed many of them. So thank you for that thorough explanation and for the legwork that you've put in over the past several weeks on getting this presentation ready to go. And so if if there are any.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Satterfield.
Um, so I I just, there's a lot that is still running through my mind right now. And while I 100% support the district going one-to-one, I think that that is something that's past due, that we should have been one-to-one. And so I'm excited that that is now the notion that we're going through. But I just want to put out there just some information. Not to say that this is necessarily going to change what we're voting on or anything, but just making sure that it's clarity out there. I know we could, we've been throwing around L and N and how they've been able to really, I mean, they're number nine in the state. So happy and excited about them and the program that they're doing and the education that they're doing. But I want to make sure that we're clear that they also have a device that allows them to do certain programming that the Chromebooks will not allow. And so I don't want the public or our board members to have this misconception that we get these devices, then we're all can be like an L and N school. Because the resources have, they have MacBook Airs and they have programming that allows them to do those things, such as coding and take education to the next level. And so I want to make sure that we're clear on that and have an understanding for that. And also, the public has an understanding of, yes, we might, yes, we're going to put in resources and buy buy these Chromebooks for one-to-one, but there's still a level of what you can actually do on these devices. And so that, I just want to throw that out there and just make it clear. But I also just, we, I mean, you all said yourself that we have 40,000 devices already. We're already one-to-one with 40,000 devices. And that has been supported through fundraising, through donations, and also through Title I funding. And so I understand that it's one of those approaches that it needs to be funded through the district level. But I'm curious, I raised the question of, is it wise to spend? but I'm curious, I, I raised the question of, is it wise to spend this large amount of money that we are essentially being, um, I, I mean, even Commissioner Swan herself said, like, be mindful of how you spend this money, uh, because it could just be significantly worse in the coming years. And for these devices to be have, to have to be replaced every three years possibly or every five years possibly. And we can really predict that the next two or three years are going to be even worse than where we're at right now when it comes to the budget. I, I'm, I'm just hesitant on, is it a wise, um, purchase of sixty thousand so many right now? And I understand that we don't know what August looks like and we might have to go completely distant learning. And there's also a lot of unknown because we're waiting on the county and the city to, um, make broadband a thing in Knox County as a whole. Um, I even think about where I live, I only have one internet option and I have to pay seventy plus dollars for it. And there's no other servers, servers in this area. There's other districts that do not have servers at, at all. So we're committing to a seven million dollar purchase. All of these barriers are unknown. And so that's just where I stand with it and I support our district going one-to-one. I just, I just feel like we have to be, it just feels really irresponsible to spend this CARE Act money. Example, real life examples helped me a lot to understand. I got my twelve hundred dollar stimulus, stimulus check and I really wanted to buy Apple Watch, but I know that I probably should use that money for something else. And so I'm just really cautious of spending that money when we know that we don't know what the next year, upcoming years will look like. So if there's a different solution, I don't have a solution. So that's, that's why I'm saying that it does, it's not really going to impact my vote if we go to one-to-one, but I really push for, um, figuring out how we can figure out another solution without having to shake, take that chunk of such a much-needed money that we're possibly going to need like next year. So that's just my thoughts on the whole situation.
Ms. Bab.
And this will just be quick on comments and some of it addresses Evady. I mean, I do think that we have gotten kind of a, a bunch, some money that can be used for this. And so maybe it'll enable us to do something in a crisis to enable us to be better for this crisis. But, you know, I've been contacted by a lot of community members, businesses that have said, you know, if we were asked, we would help fund this because I think our community as a whole has realized our public schools could not continue education the way we all expected education to happen because of the lack of technology. And so I think after, I mean, I kind of look at it as maybe we could use the seven million in the first year, but can we look at not each school doing coupon sales and bake sales to get their devices? But can we look at some community initiatives to fund the community as a whole? And the second comment I want to make is I look at me and Susan and Christie all have college-age kids. And I think some people just think this was seamless for people who had technology. As someone with three college kids who continued education, it was horrible. I mean, the instruction was terrible. And they had the technology, but what we've got to do is work with our teachers to train them on how to, to offer remote technology in the case that it happens. And obviously it doesn't need to take up all of our time, but just having a device does not make for good instruction. And so I just want to keep that in mind that I really support. We have got to do great professional development with our teachers to support them to be able to do this well.
Yes, I, I definitely agree. Um, it, and I've, and I've also had, you know, I've had firsthand experience with my daughter doing remote learning in college. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm not sure she, you know, really learned that much in the past couple of weeks because her teachers, you know, haven't really been trained on it. And so I've also read several reports from around the country of people who have remote learning and it's been a challenge. I've talked to, um, friends who have, who are teachers and are parents in private schools. And it has been a real challenge. I honestly haven't, have heard very, I've heard a lot more negative than positive. So, um, it, it, our teachers definitely need training and I'm, I'm glad that, um, then Shannon and Teresa have been working on that so much because that's true. I mean, and I think that the, one of the biggest things that I've seen over this timeframe is that this really, to me, re, um, just confirms how important our teachers are and the relationships that they have with students. Um, I think that that just cannot be overestimated. The, um, the impact that teachers have on students um, is immeasurable because even if you have a great teacher who's teaching on the screen, um, if it's not your teacher that you have a relationship with and you know, as a child that that teacher cares about you, the kid's just not going to get as much out of it. That's just how we're wired. So, you know, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that, that, I, I mean, I think that that's what we've seen over the past several weeks is how important um, are those relationships are, how important it is that we are in classrooms. So, you know, going back to our conversation with Dr. Buchanan, I hope that people will abide by the guidelines and do what we can do to stay healthy. So our kids can be in the classroom in August. We just, that is what we need. Um, and I, it's, it's challenging because I, um, also agree with, with a lot of what Ms. Satterfield said about just the funding issues going forward. We're not going to have, this is the only time that we're going to have, um, funding like this that we can utilize for technology. And we, um, we hear all the time, you know, how behind we are. So we need the technology and at the same time, we are going, it's going to be a constant battle with, with the budget. There's just no question. But at the same time, we need this technology. And if we don't do this, if we don't buy the technology and we are in the same situation in the fall, what are we going to do then? Because we will, we, at that point, we will have no options. So, um, so, you know, I think that the team has been talking about this for the past eight years and purchasing technology for more of our students. And, and we know that, um, we know that a lot of our, a lot of the expectation of our community is that we should already be providing it. So yes, it's going to continue to be a challenge with the budget. There's no doubt about it. And, um, and Ms. Bab, I hope, I think that you're right. I think we, we probably do have a lot of community partners that we can, um, that we can follow up with. And I think, um, you know, the superintendent and Dr. Ryswick and some other folks were on, on that call that he mentioned earlier, um, last week. So, um, we have community members who are interested in, in helping us. So we'll definitely need to work on those. Ms. Satterfield.
Is there, um, and I don't know this superintendent John, have we done an inventory on which devices are still up to date? Um, that possibly we could do a rollout type of approach? Um, is there, is there a number? Cause like I said, I, a lot of my schools are one-to-one. A lot of Virginia schools are one-to-one because of the previous sources. But I also know that the Google Chrome situation. So I'm just curious, is there an inventory already taken regarding what's still to where if we spent five million dollars out of the CARES Act, because I do agree that this is the one-time shot of money. But if we spend five million, that still frees up two just ways to work that. Um, I'm just curious.
Right. And Ms. Byer probably needs to be the one to answer that. I know she's been, she, she may have that already. I know she's been working on it. So let me, let me, if Ms. Byer's still on, let, let me let her join in the conversation and respond to that.
Um, yes, sorry, Ms. Satterfield. Uh, we do know, um, the, the status of each device and what operating system is on them. We, um, have, um, nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty, I think, um, devices that will be going out of support September of twenty twenty-one. So that's why I'm saying the end of next school year. And then another fourteen thousand seventy some odd that, uh, will be going out of support June of twenty twenty-two. So, um, your point is well-taken that, um, you know, we need to very much look at the, the granular details of how many devices we are ordering. And, uh, and we are doing that, but we don't want to get into a situation, um, particularly with some schools that have used title funds to, um, buy devices where, um, you know, we're buying for the entire district and, well, and not for the title schools. So we have to be, um, very equitable when it comes to, um, you know, allocating those funds across the board.
Okay. Um, so yes, I hear that and I, I a hundred percent agree. Um, but I had the, the opportunity to have my budget meeting this morning. This is just me just expressing my disdain right now. Um, and there's a lot of other impacts to where September twenty-one and Sep, and June of twenty twenty-two, I, I personally feel like there could be a rollout because that's thirty-five thousand dollars. There's thirty-five thousand devices. So that's only half that we will need. Um, so the equitable part that you mentioned regarding, um, Title One, and I, I get that. I understand that we don't want them to be, we don't, I don't want my schools and our Title One funding schools to be left out. But I also don't want my Title One full schools and my priority schools and everything else to be drastically impacted because we're making this, this purchase of basically ending two years' worth of devices early just because we have this blanket amount of money right now. So that's all I'm going to say, because, um, that's just where I'm at with it. Uh, this is where I'm at with it now, but I just wanted to make sure that the board members understood my perspective.
And, and I, I think it's a very valid point. And I think if you, if, if you guys could go back and, and look at it that way, and, um, that would be helpful.
Glad, be glad to.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I, also I want to make the point because I've heard from some, some high school business teachers who are concerned about the, um, like, like Ms. Satterfield said, that some of the software is not supported on Chromebooks. So we just need to, it just needs to be reiterated that this is not an end-all be-all. If we are on, if we're online in the fall, it's not going to be a perfect world. It's still going to be a huge challenge. It, there may be classes that, that are, um, still at a disadvantage. So, um, so anyway, that's, that is a challenge and that's a concern. I know for those teachers who, um, teach those classes um, in schools where they would, where the kids would be using Chromebooks. So that's, that's a, that's a concern. Ms. Owen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to kind of note that if we have around thirty-three thousand that are going out of support by next year, but we only have forty thousand, then we're just looking at a few that would still be in support. So the, the rest of that number is either devices we don't have at all or a very limited number that would be in support. And I think we previously had an email that said we had only about six thousand that would be in support at all beyond that point. So it's not that we have thirty-three thousand that are going out of support and then we have that other number that are good. We only have that tiny limited about six thousand that would still be in support. Um, we haven't really talked about looking at the, the self-insurance. And I really appreciate, by the way, yesterday, Mr. Thomas and Gail Byer and Ron McPherson and Freddie Cox answering some of my questions. One of those was about the, uh, the insurance cost. And we talked about that cost and also community partners helping with things like, um, getting broadband access and all of those things. But also we talked about community partners helping with the cost of that self-insurance. And if we had enough community partners to help with that, to the point that all of our students were covered, then that would be thirty dollars per year per student. And then in that pool of, of self-insurance funding, that would be quite a chunk that could go toward those new devices. Because all of that, obviously with the insurance, you don't always use it. You know, there's going to be, most of that is just the just-in-case money. So the cost is fifty dollars per year for, per device. The insurance at thirty dollars per year. So it's really just that twenty dollars per year that we would be completely lacking. Does that make sense? So it's, it's not as huge a cost per year as looking at if we can get the community partners to help with that.
I, I think so. And, and the, the, the meeting Friday, Susan, um, uh, alluded to it too, meeting Friday was basically how as a community, community can we help you? So I think that's a, you know, that's an excellent suggestion too, to take back to, to this, to the task force that's working on that as a way. And of course, the internet access is, is key too. It doesn't do any good to have a laptop if you don't have access. And, uh, that's got to be a priority. So we're, we're, we're not spending, spending our money wisely if, if our families don't have access. So, um, that's, that's got to be a high priority as well. And, and the questions have been very insightful. Um, and, and I know I've been thinking as I've been listening too. So that's a, a lot of things for us to go back and, and, uh, sort of rehash. And, and Ms. Satterfield's right too on the, you know, she had her budget meeting today and now we've got budget meetings with board members and, uh, coming up too, and, and definitely looking at, uh, uh, at a crisis with our budget. So, um, we'll talk a whole lot about that tonight since we're going to meet individually with you, but we'll, we also plan to have a community meeting so that we can inform folks too, after we have an opportunity to talk to board members and kind of lay out where we are with budget and all. But, uh, yeah, I think the, uh, the community help with the, uh, insurance would be, be, would be, is a great idea.
I think from a budget perspective, um, there, there are folks who are always asking us to ask for what we need. And I think that's not just asking for that budget line that we need. It's asking the, the whole community. I, I think we've not done a very good job of going out in the community and saying, here are our needs. How can you help us? So maybe we can do a little, a little more of that, make it really clear that this, this is a cost that, that we don't have, that we don't have any support for. And it's not coming from the state so that we could get some more. And I think there are many businesses who would really love to support us more if they knew what our needs are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bounce, did you have a question? Comment?
Now, I just had a suggestion, but it kind of followed what you said earlier, but so it may not seem as, um, pertinent now, but I did want to thank you for putting together that list of like thirty-two questions that community members and board members submitted and the staff for compiling those answers. Now, some of those answers may look different after tonight's discussion. I know Ms. Bab put it on social media and I know it's attached to the agenda. But I really would hope if it isn't online on our website, that we would attach uh, the thirty-two questions and the responses because I think it would really help those in the public to be able to go in and read those. And some may go to the agenda to find that, but others could access it to the website if it's not on there. So.
I saw it on the agenda and that's it. But I do think it's a good F Q and A for everybody to hear.
I think so too, because that would, you know, we don't mind answering emails or phone calls, but I think this document would help the public to at least see the effort that's been put into your all's, um, you know, work on this. So that was all I was going to suggest. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion. Mr. Thomas, maybe, maybe we can get Carly to add that on the, um, on the website in a more prominent place.
Oh, yeah. We, I think it's a great idea. I thought about that a little bit myself too. I, I, I know it was last night just getting that finished up and getting to you. So, uh, but, but we'll get it on the website.
That'd be great. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Okay. If not, thank you for that great discussion and all the work that's gone into that, um, effort. Um, and we will move now to Board Forum. Um, we'll start with Ms. Satterfield.
Um, yes, thank you. I just want to say congratulations to all of our twenty twenty graduates. Um, also congratulations to our valedictorian that has been insalutatorian. I've been, been able to watch beautiful pictures on Instagram that they're just celebrating in the way that they have. So kudos to you all. And if you want to tag me on social media to get it shared, I'm more than happy to do that. Um, and then I just also just want to, um, say thank you to, uh, the, the district and you Superintendent Thomas. This time has not been easy. If, if your budget's anything like my personal budget, I can just under, I understand the pressure of trying to figure it out. Um, so thank you. I do, I do appreciate the work that's gone into this work, um, into what we're, was to come. And I'm hopeful that we as a board, um, will, will come up with a solution that will support the needs in, in the situation that we're in now. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. We'll move to District Two. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to, um, the Teacher Supply Depot and Ms. Bab.
the Teacher Supply Depot and Ms. Bab and all the volunteers who helped get school supplies together to give out at some of our distribution sites. They, they worked several days to gather those and deliver them to the sites and everyone was social distancing and wearing masks and there are pictures to prove it. But it was, that was, that was a really great effort. And our, I've talked to lots of principals who really appreciated that. And they talked about how much the students appreciated having that, that little something that helped them out at home. So thanks to the Teacher Supply Depot and all the volunteers who worked for that.
Thank you. Yes, that's, that's great. Um, okay, Mr. Norman, District Three.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, District Four is Ms. Bab.
Just want to say probably the same as everybody else, congratulations to all our graduates and also happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I do, I, I'm going to reiterate what several of us have said tonight. I think this crisis has made us realize how much everyone loves their teachers and appreciates them. And I think this, this week is more appropriate than any other time I've ever seen it.
Very well said. Thank you. And District Si, Six, Ms. Hill.
Yes, just encourage every board member, if you haven't already, to go to a, a distribution site when, when food and supplies are being given. It's very uplifting to see a lot of the kids smiling faces. Kudos to both of my high schools, Karnes and Harden Valley, both in, in my district and the really the second and third miles that they have gone with billboards and signs. And, and I know that it's, it's not what it should be, but it's a little, a little step in the right direction and, and look forward to that continuing. But appreciate our, our downtown, our leadership staff. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the many, many hours you've put in. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Moving to Ms. Bounds, District Seven.
Yeah, just want to apologize to the board members for all the feedback from the devices I was trying to get on. Three multiple devices because of technical problems. I however hosted a meeting this morning of twenty five people without any problems, but this afternoon was a disaster. And also just, what was the other point? Uh, yes, I was going to award myself the perseverance award for persevering and finally getting to join you all. So I hope you're doing well.
Thank you. We're glad you were able to join us. It was not looking good there for a minute. So we're glad you got on there. District Eight, Mr. McMillan. All right, District Nine, Ms. Christie.
I would just like to kind of piggyback on what everybody else has said. And first, thank you to all of our administrators. I think I might have missed administrator appreciation day too. And I know our principals have been working really hard to keep in contact with their students and the meal distribution hubs. And thank you to our teachers. I know this has not been an ideal Teacher Appreciation Week, but we still appreciate you all very much now more than ever. And, and also to our seniors and senior parents, we hear you and just you know, hang in there and please be patient with us. Hopefully some of this will change.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Yeah, there's really nothing new that I could say that hasn't already been said, but, but I just concur with my other fellow board members. I'm grateful for our staff and, and truly, as I said before, I think that you know, the biggest lesson that we've seen is just how much we need our kids in the classroom and and that how great the relationships that those are, those relationships the teachers have with our students and how important they are. And so thank you to all the staff. Thank you to the principals and all the nutrition folks who've packed up all the, all those six hundred and seventy three bags. I mean, that is a lot of food to pack. So that's very, very time consuming. So thank you to all those folks who've made that happen. I think everybody can see from just the discussion that we've had tonight, how, how much time and effort our central office staff have been putting in to being able to answer these questions that we sent them probably yesterday. So, so they've just been putting in an inordinate amount of time. We appreciate all that time and effort and energy and and the reason they do that is because they love kids. And they all started out in the classroom and they, they're you know, all of the people that are on this board, the people that serve in our schools and our central office in any capacity are in this, this business because they love kids. And so we are all so sad for our seniors that we're not getting to do graduation. I mean, that's Mr. Thomas sits through every single one of those graduations for a solid week every year. And it's, even though it's difficult, it is the highlight of his year because he gets to see the the end result of all that, that has happened for those, all those years for those students. So, so it's, this is disappointing, you know, for everybody. And our hearts just go out to all our seniors and families and just hang in there. And as Ms. Christie said, just be patient. And hopefully we'll be able to have a little more normal graduation than maybe it looks right, looks right now. And so we are, we're just thankful to be a part of such a great community and we'll, we will just continue to do the very best that we can for our kids. And I appreciate everybody. Our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much.